Good evening, everyone. Welcome back to Council Chambers, to the July 8, 2020, meeting of the Auburn School Committee. Can I ask you to please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice to see everyone in person this evening, and we welcome Dr. Connie Brown to her first school committee meeting with us. Welcome. Let's begin with, thank you. Begin with introductions in ward order, please. We no longer have rep from Ward 1, so we start with Ward 2.
And I'm Ward 2. Pam Hart, Ward 2.
Karen Matthew, Ward 3.
Brian Bellknap, Ward 4.
Dan Poisson, Ward 5.
Me. Faith Fontaine at large.
Dave Simpson at large.
Ryan Carrier, Mayor's Rep.
Kind of forgot like almost which order this went. When we get to 5, it's sort of like, all right, which one?
I know, I'm like, Dave, do you want to go first?
Absolutely.
Ladies first.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's move on to communications. I'm going to share a communication with you this evening in regards to the fact that the Auburn School Committee, as well as Dr. Brown, have planned a couple of retreats scheduled for Monday, July 13, as well as Tuesday, July 21, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Those retreats will be held upstairs in the conference room, 4th floor, Auburn, of the Auburn School Department. Members of the public are welcome to attend, and there'll be an opportunity for public participation. Formal agendas for these meetings will be going out shortly, and they'll be posted on the Auburn School Department website. The purpose and the goals for the retreat will be listed on the agendas. Some of those agenda items will include the roles and responsibilities for school committee members, developing expectations for Dr. Brown, establishing the goals for the school committee, reviewing the evaluation process, and we will be reporting out during the school committee meeting, the work of those, the work of the retreat on July 22, during the regular school committee meeting. So I wanted to make sure that communication was out there. Anyone else have a communication they'd like to share this evening? All right, seeing none. Let's move on to the consent agenda. The approval of tonight's consent agenda includes the approval of the agenda in front of you, the approval of the minutes for June 17, 2020, as well as the certificated nominations of the people listed on your agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian Carrier. Can I have a second?
Second.
Brian Bellknap, thank you very much. All those, any comments, discussions, debates? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda? Wonderful, none opposed. Motion passes. We are now 7. It's going to take me a little bit to get used to that. There's 7 all. All right, public participation this evening. We are welcoming public participation. You can, if you are watching, we are streaming live. There is still a phone number at the bottom of your screen. It's 207-240.
100 people show up for public participation. Hopefully that won't, I mean, I just don't, I want to know in case anybody asks.
So we had that conversation about, that's why the chairs are spaced 6 feet apart, and it almost becomes when the chairs are filled, and we do not have, I believe, right now, for example, tonight, the conference room is being, for overflow, the conference room on the side is being used for voter registration trainings. So I'm not absolutely sure how we would, how we would handle that one. Absolutely not sure. I believe it would just sort of be call-in at that point, or use Zoom. We'd probably invite people to jump on their phone, and next meeting we'll probably have a Zoom link, so they could publicly participate that way as well. I believe that's how City Council has been handling it. Just being the first week back. What have they been doing?
Well, we've been on, with us meeting here, we've had the comments coming in from Zoom, because before we changed over, there, we didn't have the 50 people. It was only the 10 for us. But what we've said in the past is, we have 2 overflow rooms that we could utilize, and we could have the podium set up over there. People could come in, make their comments, we could answer, and they just switch out if we, if we have that many, yeah.
Right, I think the bottom line is, we will accommodate as quickly and as easily as we can. We will, we will accommodate those people, so. All right, seeing no public participation this evening, let's move on. Student information is not applicable to tonight's meeting. Superintendent report. We have policies this evening. Michelle McClellan is going to present the following policies for the first reading. They were all included in your onboarding packet. We have the use of private vehicle policies, free and reduced price food service policies, as well as competitive food sales. All yours.
Sure. So EEBB, the use of private vehicles on school business, you had a chance to look that over. Just to give you a little bit of information about, the changes were very minor. In fact, they were mostly just wording, a couple of changes on wording. There was a word left out, for example. Policy was moved to procedure, those types of things. And in this one, this happens once in a while, we changed, and I left that on there for you to see, we changed the coding. The coding wasn't in alignment with what MSMA uses, and there's kind, doesn't, doesn't matter, and it does matter. It matters when you're trying to reference and cross-reference to policies and look them up and see what other policies are looking like. So we came into alignment with the coding that is used and recommended by MSMA. So that's that one.
Michelle, in regards to, in regards to this one, I'm sorry, we are on the private use of vehicles, correct?
Yes.
Can you explain just a little bit, who can be a designee?
Who can be a designee?
It's the approval of the superintendent or designee.
Okay, let me read in the context of that particular sentence, because it can be a lot of people for the designee. Where there's approval of the superintendent, designee. So it may be me. It could be the building principal.
Okay.
That would be most likely. In some cases, it might be you, Adam, but I think those would be more typical.
Okay.
Me to step in, in Connie's absence, or the building principal.
Okay.
Any other questions on that policy? Okay. Then we'll move to EFC, free and reduced price food service. Again, this, this policy, we had a little bit more substantial revision to align with changes in statute that was adopted in the last legislative session. You might remember the food shaming bill that was put in. So we updated our policy to align with some of the, the language and responsibility from that statute.
Okay. I did have a question, or just a, in the 1, 2, well, I'll count the 1 sentence as a paragraph, 1, 2, 3, 4. It, the sentence that says, should there be any difficulty in obtaining such payment, the matter is to resolve by direct contact with the parent or student if emancipated. I wonder if the word "parent" might be a little bit too, too narrow? Should that, should the word "legal guardian" be in there? Because it, we know some children do not have, are not with their parents. It was referenced in the other, a student may be asked to carry a letter to a parent or guardian regarding the matter, but I'm just wondering if we does, if we should make sure that we're discerning that it can be a parent or legal guardian.
Sure.
I agree.
And it brings it into alignment, like you said, too. I think some was old language and new language, and we didn't pick it up in the old language.
Right.
Where is that again?
1, 2, 3, 4. I'm going to consider that 1 line as a paragraph as well, so it's the 4th paragraph, right about in the middle.
Paragraph, sorry. I thought you were, yep, got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else on that? Okay. And EFE, competitive food sales. This actually, we ended up with the most minor of revisions. It was just 1 change in the cross-reference policies. The rest was just reviewed by the subcommittee and found that the language, there were no updated, updates needed, and so we stayed with the language as, as currently written.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Michelle? Any debate?
Brian, Dan, anything to add on this?
No.
All right, Michelle, refresh my memory. Do we do these one at a time, or can we lump them together?
You can do these together, because they're all policy for first.
Okay, wonderful. Ladies and gentlemen, can we entertain a motion to approve the first reading of the above-listed policies as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian Carrier, second.
Second.
Thank you, Dan Poisson. Any questions, comments, debates? Seeing none, going to take a vote. All in favor? Not opposed, motion passes, 7, nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Great.
And we're going to stick with Michelle. Next would be information and committee reports. The safety and health reentry report from the committee is going to give us an update as to the work that has been done and the work that is to come. So we're going to turn it over to Michelle and some representatives from the committee to update all of us. We're getting a report this evening. Part of what we are going to be asked to do on July 22 is to approve a plan. So this is getting our information ahead of time, so have time to think about it, raise questions if you have questions, so that you are, can make a really well-informed vote on the 22nd. Okay? All right. Now, without further ado, Shelley and Michelle have the floor.
And then we'll have some others come up and, and share as well. So yeah, so tonight, we're, we're here to just update you, as, as Karen explained, on where we're at with the process, getting ready for that million-dollar question that everyone is asking about, wanting to know about, anxious to hear about. So tonight, we're going to provide you with some information about the steering committee. The Health and Safety Reentry Steering Committee, as you know, we've talked about before. We started at the end of May after watching a webinar about reopening schools in Europe and said, we need to get, we need to start this conversation now. And began that work, looking at reentry of teachers for the workshop days at the end of the school year. Pulled together a group of people, asked for people who were interested to join staff, they included staff, they included parents, as well as city representatives.
So, um. Michelle, can I ask a question? Because I have been asked this. How was, how were the people chosen to be part of this committee?
It was who was interested, and then we looked at who we needed to round out the, the representation.
But like for parents, how did you, did you send something out to ask parents if they wanted to be part of it?
No, there wasn't anything that went out formally, like at other committees. This was pulled together, trying to look at what was out in terms of practices at the time, and we had had, I had a conversation with a parent who happens to be a pediatrician, and so he, he participated in, in our group at that point.
So in the beginning, you're kind of starting your group to try to kind of figure out what you're doing, and then do you plan on having other people, like asking more parents, or, I know there's a survey that went out, but I'm just, for clarification and for transparency, I just want to make sure everybody's involved.
So yeah, we want that to be transparent as well. It's why we keep updating folks on it, and yes, it's a group that has grown. It is, and it will continually grow. It's not an exclusive group. Like many of our working groups in the school department, it's open, and so if people are interested in participating, I would be happy to hear from them, and we can involve them. We are a working group right now, so I want to put that criteria out there. We're at the boots-on-the-ground.
Not so advisory.
Yeah, it is a working group, and Karen can speak to that, the work that's going on in that group, so. Yeah, Faith?
Just going to say, in the survey that went out, Pam, it did say, if you're interested in giving your input or being a part, you can contact. I forget who it was to contact, but that was on the bottom of the survey, that went out to all parents.
But at the beginning, it was a, who can we pull together?
Yeah.
Just in terms of transparency.
It was a fast pull-together, too.
It was.
Sort of like, we need to get this going now.
Yeah. And it will continue to grow as the work is evolving. It, yeah, it will continue to grow. We're going to need a lot of hands in this work. Okay, so, as Karen said, we're going to talk about, update a bit, and this is all leading up to the decision, the board approval for the opening, the structure and the schedule of how learning's going to look in the fall. Okay. So.
Wrong way.
So, oh, and I didn't hand these out, we jumped right in, I apologize. Pass it, Brian. There you go. Good catch. So over the course of the month of June, many conversations, reading guidance, looking at research, other models, the group has identified some goals of our reopening plan, and they are underpinning and guiding the decisions that we make as we go along. So as we plan, our goal is to maximize these 3 points. Maximize in-person learning, maximize physical health and safety, and maximize social, emotional, behavioral, and mental health needs. So that's what we want to maximize. We're also working to minimize, at the same time, the inequities in access to learning, and then the impact on families. And through discussions, it's become really clear that, well, we believe that, in order to minimize impact of inequities on learning, the more we can have that in-person, student and teacher interaction, we're going to, we're going to lessen the inequities. We're going to minimize those inequities, and also hopefully have less impact on families and, and some of the things that we've all seen and heard and maybe experienced during our closure. So looking at the, the challenge that has been presented in terms of physical health and safety and social, emotional needs during COVID-19, right? That has been, that's our challenge now, is to really develop a plan that allows for all 3 of those things to be equally considered in coming back together and, and the learning structures that are going to need to be in place, along with all the unknowns associated with COVID-19. And we all could sit here and think about that. So what we talk about today, at the beginning of July, we know that there are unknowns about what the beginning of August is going to look like, but still doing our best to put forth a plan, staying up to date on what's happening across the state in terms of transmission and spread.
I appreciate that you're looking at the social, emotional, and behavioral, and mental health aspect of it, because I think that's really important, and it's definitely something that we really need to look at, you know? So I appreciate that.
There's been impact. There's definitely been impact.
Absolutely.
You know, we know that that's always a concern and consideration in, in the education of our, our children, our students. Right now, we have to recognize that there's been a lot that has happened and experienced since March.
And now, when you talk about the physical health and safety, because I know that there's been some conversation, and I, people have spoken to me about, because there are people who think that children cannot transmit the disease. You know, the, the percentage is minimal, and they're not going to transmit. Personally, I, I don't agree with that, because honestly, I don't think we really know, truly. But my concern is also, too, is the teachers. Maybe the children aren't spreading it, or they're not going to show any symptoms, but that doesn't necessarily mean they can't spread it to the teachers. And now, if a teacher is exposed, does she have to go in, he or she did, do they have to go into 14-day quarantine? Now, that also implies that you have to use your sick time, and there's so many, I mean, I, and I don't mean to keep going on this, but there's, it's so complex.
Yes, it is.
And I think when people want an answer, what are we doing? There's just so many complexities to it, that I appreciate that we already have a committee that is looking into it, but those are questions that I have, too, as far as the staff, because I want to make sure that they, as much as I want to make sure the students are safe, of course I do, but I also want to make sure our staff is safe.
Thanks for underscoring that complexity. It's really hard to fully understand that sometimes, when you're not in the midst of it, but as you start to talk about these things, you know, it's peeling back an onion. It's, oh, another layer, another layer, another layer. So it is really complex. And also, thank you for that recognition of that adults are transmitting and becoming more symptomatic and at risk than children are, at least in the research that we're reading out of the American Association of Pediatrics and some other more recent research that's just come out about COVID. And I can share that with you if you want to see it.
Without a lot of clarity, we've had conversation about, what is the age, what is the age of a child?
Right.
And where do you sort of start to cross over into the more likely transmission? You know, saying, you know, when you think about Tylenol, for example, you can take Tylenol if you're 12 or over, so it's, that's part of the unknown as well.
And it is hard, because I mean, my niece had COVID. She was diagnosed twice with COVID and had no symptoms whatsoever. And then I have friends who had severe symptoms and were hospitalized, and I have some, I know someone who died of COVID. So there's, there is such a wide, so to, I don't know, whenever I hear someone say, well, it's very miniscule, I have a hard time just following that path, because you don't know. We don't know how it will affect us, and that's a scary thing.
And I don't think from the conversations that have been happening at the committee, that any of those concerns or worries or thoughts are minimalized at all. They are at the forefront of everyone's, absolutely everyone's mind. That's why the, the lens of physical health and safety for all, I think, is, is important to, to know that we are considering the physical health and safety of adults as well as students.
Definitely, very much so. Well, you know, that's a great segue into the next slide, because.
You're welcome.
I was going to say, there's a wide continuum of beliefs out there, and you face them every day in your conversations, and Pam, you just exemplified them. You know, there's anywhere from, it's not a big deal, to, I haven't left my house since March. So what we're trying to do is, what do we use for information to guide us? And our work to date has been informed by these list of things, the DOE guidelines that have come out, and there are certain subsections in the DOE guidelines, categories that the guidelines fall into, and we've listed them there. Input from parents through the survey and from staff, and then looking at other models, whether that's in the state, in the country, or internationally, looking at models, so much so that we forget which state we're talking about. Was that New Jersey, or was that Massachusetts? Really trying to look at best practices on those schools or states who have moved out already and have provided more specific guidelines, those schools who've actually opened, and what we can learn from them, both in the positive, and maybe some things that we would do differently as well. So that's, that's what we're using for information, which leads to factors to consider. So as we're making the plan, these are the factors that we're considering.
Yes, I just wanted to catch you before you went to the next one. So I've had a bunch of questions about the Department of Education guidelines. Are they recommendations, or are they mandates? Because I've had people say to me, oh, well, no, the state's going to decide what we do. So can you just speak to that? Are they recommendations, or are they mandates?
I think there's someplace in between. They're guidelines. I think it's been reported in a couple of news media sources that the state is going to make the decision. And what we're hearing from the commissioner is that we're going to, the state is going to provide information to the local, and the local makes decisions about openings and closings. Okay, that's the responsibility of the local. Is there anything, you, Shelley sits on some, a state committee looking at?
No, I think that's, we, we've had conversation about that. There are people in my work group and that work group that feel like it should be a stronger word than guidelines.
Right.
I think the, I think the rub is, there's intention that it is taken seriously, but it isn't something that the DOE can mandate locally.
Okay.
So that's sort of where, I think that's how they landed at the word guidelines.
And that's how I took it, too, that locally, we're going to ultimately make the decisions, but these are the guidelines, recommendations.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Connie, anything to add?
I'm glad you asked that, because I've been getting the same thing, and there, it's been so confusing, because for a while, like you said, there were, people were being, you know, stories out there that it's the DOE that's going to control this, and we're just going to follow, but I, you know, I appreciate that it's just the guideline and that we can decide how we go, because I think, you know, if you look at Madawaska, Maine, and you look at Auburn, Maine, those are very different schools, very different locations. They've been affected very differently, so we need to be sure that we have that local control, I think.
Did you want?
I just was wondering if Connie had anything she wanted to add to that in terms of the guidelines there.
If not.
Okay, good, great.
Are you looking, just when you say, are there models just educational institutions? Or are you looking at congregate care facilities?
I haven't looked, I personally haven't looked at any congregate care facilities for this purpose. I, my mother's 97, so I've been looking at congregate care. I haven't been looking at that specifically. What I know is that a lot of the same information goes into the guidelines and the development for the state guidelines in, in looking at the best practices around things.
Are there some resources you're, you have?
Oh, no, and I, I'm not going to bring my, my professional life into it, but I work with, where we house 2,400 people, and we've successfully kept it out by following the guidelines you guys went for, the teachers, you know, the temperature, the self, you know, disclosure and social distancing, where we, where we cannot social distance. And I think it was based on the recommendations from the federal National CDC early, mid-March.
Yes, correct.
So it's, I think there's other data points out there that might be useful beyond just, you know, as educational institution.
So the CDC is a, if, I think if we rewound back to when we last updated you, we said we're relying on the main CDC and the National CDC for a lot of the information that we were getting, and we don't have that listed up here. That was probably earlier in our.
In the guidelines, the DOE guidelines are predicated on those and were vetted through the state CDC, so.
Yeah. You know, one thing that's different about us with congregate care is, congregate care, and I'm thinking of my mother's situation, they, they held those people in, in the, in the residence, and of course, the workers come and go, like you were saying, and that's where they monitor tightly. We're going to have everybody coming and going. Everybody's going to come and go in this situation, so. So looking at the guidelines and the other information that we're using, some factors that we have to consider in our conversations, both at the steering committee and in the work groups, the physical space available in our buildings. How much space do we have? How was it arranged? How can we use it? Bus capacities, obviously. How many students can we transport on our buses, and the number of drivers in, in the buses in our fleet? Standard health precautions. Some examples are there, the social distancing measures, what's, what are we using for social distancing measures? The use of masks, the sanitation protocols. Fiscal implications. Those are big. protocols. Fiscal implications. Those are big and, but obvious. Again, the equitable access to learning and then resources that are available to us. And we look at these, we have to look at all of these in making considerations for recommendations as well as feasibility. Feasibility, you know, nimbleness is a word that we used for a long time. Now we're into the feasibility. Is this feasible, what we're proposing? Can we do this and is it feasible? Of those factors considered, there are some limiting factors and there's, these are the same ones. So we just pulled out those factors that tend, that we're finding as we're looking at these factors and considering and developing recommendations. That physical space of the building, the building is only so big and the spaces within it are only so big and that limits us in terms of options. Same with the bus. The number of staff we have. So we may have enough space in some cases, but if we don't have enough staff to supervise, then that's, that can limit our, our options. And then of course, our fiscal implications certainly will limit us in some cases as well. And that's how we derive that feasibility, answer the feasibility question, pass through that feasibility filter, if you will.
As far as physical factors and stuff, limiting factors, as far as Edward Little, ventilation, I mean, we already know that there's an issue. They don't have air conditioning. There's ventilation issues. Are you looking at that as well as far as, you know, the spacing distances and keeping people safe? Because that's something that personally I was wondering about.
Certainly. I, I know that that has come up in conversation with Billy when Connie went around to buildings. They were talking about some ventilation and what's the level of ventilation in certain spaces to consider and
Because I know that they use fans sometimes when it, you know, school starts because it's so hot in there. But then that's also contraindicated when you're talking about COVID. So
Good point.
That's my concern there.
Good point. Definitely.
I think also when we think about buildings and resources, if, you know, if, I want to make sure that we are not just limiting ourselves to what we know as the buildings that are part of the Auburn School Department, but also looking at buildings that we know are part of the Auburn community. The old police station that is sitting abandoned over here, how could, how could that potentially be utilized? How can the senior center potentially be utilized? How can NSBA potentially be utilized? What buildings do we have that if we say to the, you know, the Auburn city, we need to utilize every possible inch that we can of this, of this community, how can we do that and how can you help us facilitate that? So I think those are, you know, those are pieces to think about as well.
Great idea, actually. I like that.
If you do the math, which is done math, we can't fit everybody with these six feet social distancing rules. So how can we fit everyone in, in our facilities?
And that has been part of the conversation, just so that you know. And then going down through that, we may have enough space again, but we may get to one of those other limiting factors that, that may trip us up. So.
Yep, yep.
Okay. So some actions to date. Well, we established the committee and we talked about that. We, again, we went through and developed protocols, created and successfully implemented for the teacher workshop days, and you heard about that earlier. But also the summer programs, the childcare, the recreation programs that are in our schools, and then summer athletics, the athletics that are now have just started and are up and running and doing well from what was reported from Todd Sampson at our meeting today. And then some summer learning opportunities that will be taking place for students who are in need of maybe some, what catching up, so to speak, or staying, staying up, did not do well in the initial closure and can use a boost during
Are these face-to-face classes or are these online classes?
Combination.
Sorry.
Yeah, I said it's a combination.
Oh, okay.
So they are doing some Zoom remote and we've worked out a protocol for very limited face-to-face interaction. I think Scott could speak to it, but I think they're doing some meetings at the picnic tables outside of EL for students who just did not engage well. And so it's a combination of catching up and also maybe building some skills that would allow them to be more successful if we have more remote learning. So.
Was that okay, Scott?
Yeah. Okay. So here are our work groups right now to date. And what I'd like to do is share the microphone for just a few moments for each of these subgroups. Again, this won't be a comprehensive, but to give you a flavor of what type of things that those groups are grappling with right now and what they're, they're doing. So.
Do you want me to give up my seat?
Well, yeah, all right.
And I think, Michelle, while you're, while you're transitioning, this is the opportunity where, when Michelle spoke earlier about opportunity to come, join, help out, bring your thoughts, ideas, this is, this is a, these are the work groups that you may feel I can maybe lend some support in this area or this area. So this is where it's open invitation.
You mean for us or for like
Anyone.
The public and parents and?
Parents, anybody. I think that's, that's your opportunity.
Is there a way, because I know, well, we keep talking about, everybody's concerned. I mean, it's, every parent is concerned, worried about this. So I kind of want to make it so that everybody can, you know, if you didn't do the survey or, because some parents are busy. Some parents are, you know, barely treading water because they've got kids and they've got, they're working and stuff. So they may not be kind of up to date or see one of these meetings or, you know, really be in tune with this. So is there a way that we can kind of do something like on Facebook, like with Val Ackley, so that people can know, just so there's more, just easier access? So that way we aren't
Well, just make sure it's known, is what you're saying, right?
Yes, just make sure it's known and it's out there. Whether they choose to be part of it, that's on them. But I just want everybody to be able to have the opportunity to be able to have a voice.
And the survey was shared, oops, sorry, shared all over Facebook, just so?
It was, but you know, sometimes some parents, you know, and, and some parents aren't on Facebook. Dave's not on Facebook. So there are parents who aren't, and there's, I'm just, I'm just trying to make it easier for everybody. So that there is no, you know, lack of transparency or any of that.
Great. Yes.
I'm not saying you're not doing a good job. I'm just, you know what I mean? I'm not critiquing that. I just want to make it easier for everybody.
No, thank you. Well, that's easy. We can do that.
Okay.
If it will be helpful, we will definitely do that. So. So we, facilities and operations. Stephanie Maris, who is on that committee, got recruited to that committee, actually, right, is going to just tell us a little bit about where you all are at and what you're working on right now.
Sure. So as Michelle said, our committee looked at all of the guidelines from the DOE and then we broke into each subcommittee for those. So as a subcommittee, we read through all the guidelines and then on a spreadsheet, we kind of like color coordinated which guidelines fit with our subgroup. Facilities and operations has a really tight overlay as you would expect with health and safety, with a lot of things that kind of coincide with that. But for where we are at as the facilities and operations group right now, our big focus, we're still, you know, way up high looking at things. We're not in specifics and in the weeds, so to speak, yet. But right now, we are working on nutrition planning, starting to think about alternative ways to provide meals to students once we're in school, what that will look like. Again, moving away from that, just doing it as it's always been done. So what are some other ways that we can be providing those meals and access for breakfast and lunch for our students within buildings? And then as a whole district, Chris Placy is looking at the kinds of meals that will be provided that will be a shift from what students have accessed in the past. We have been looking at our building square footage. Not only how many people can we put in the building, but how many students can we safely put in classrooms with social distancing and between, EL is our biggest school, Fairview is the next biggest in the build, in the district. We can fit roughly 10 to 12 students in the classroom with social distancing and the removing of extra pieces of furniture that are in the room. So those are the kinds of things we're starting to think about. How can we get creative with our spaces and use those effectively? We have done an assessment of our buildings to look for places where we need to install Plexiglas. So we're working on putting an order in for that by next Monday. Billy Hunter's gone around and worked with principals to do an assessment of which spaces in the building are going to need that extra addition. We have been talking about the different arrival procedures that we'll have to be considering as, from the facility standpoint, about how to get not only staff in the building, but also how to get students safely in the building. There is a wide variety of need there. If you're talking about East Auburn, where you have a very small student population, or EL, or Fairview, we're talking about moving different numbers of people into the building. So considering what that might look like with student drop off or bus transportation. So we're considering all of those aspects to have consistent standard operating guidelines in place for all of our buildings with sanitizing and distancing. And that, again, overlaps with the health and safety committee's work too. So we will, as we keep moving forward, we'll continue to be coordinating there. We also are working on obtaining signage right now. The Southern Maine Administrative Collaborative, I just learned what that acronym was today, is putting together a bulk order for signage. So we have a push out to all of the building administrators right now to take in account for any signage they would need, smooth surfaces, carpeting, pavement, social distancing signs, you know, entrance signs, bathroom signs, one-way traffic signs, those kind, that kind of signage to have it frequent and out so that students and staff and any individuals coming into our spaces have access to that. And then again, we're following, the DOE just announced that they're going to be providing day-to-day PPE items at no cost to districts. So they'll be doing a bulk order of that. So for masks, shields, gowns if needed, those kinds of things, sanitizing wipes and such, hand sanitizer. So that's, when we're talking about that fiscal limitation, that's a huge bonus for us too. So we will be continuing forward with that before our next meeting. Any questions?
Um.
Question? Go ahead.
No, no, I, I don't think I do.
Okay. Anyone else?
I do want to say the lunches that we've had going on since COVID, that's been wonderful. And everybody's done such a great job. So I do commend you that, that, you know, we fed the kids, which was a huge undertaking. And so it's very commendable. So.
Great. Pass that back to Chris.
Absolutely. Yes.
Food services staff, they did, they were heroes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
I'm going to report for the physical health and safety group as they didn't have a member who could be here tonight. But basically, they're talking to medical professionals and looking at the guidelines as well. Deputy Chief Matt Feifield sits on that committee, which is wonderful. He's been a fabulous resource. And Dr. Bowesman has also been a great resource for that committee. They're looking at things like training right now. They're, that, when I was jumping into their conversation today, they were talking about what kinds of trainings do we need? We did training with staff at the end of the year before they went into the schools for the workshop days, got some really good feedback about those trainings, very positive that it was helpful and assistive. We made some shifts, slight shifts in that training so that it can be even better. But now we're talking about training teachers about how to train students and how to reinforce with students these protocols and procedures as they come in. So they're looking at that. They're looking at some video clips and trainings, virtual tours through schools that we can push out before the start of the school year so that families can see, this is what it's going to look like. So we have Stephanie Maris and Celeste Bodett, for example, walking their families through, like greeting them, how it's going to, the procedures that Stephanie talked about, coming into the building, moving around the building, changes that they need to be aware of, modeling some of the procedures that will be in place. So talking about, quite a bit about that today. They were getting excited about that, quite honestly.
Almost like a virtual open house, almost.
Almost like a virtual open house. At least part of the open house will be with that in mind. Yeah, that's good, Karen.
Okay.
Again, communication, making sure the communication is to all families. How do we assure now, not just push it out, but now make sure that all families have the information they need for students to be successful and safe as they enter and move about the building? Let's see what else. So just being really forward-thinking in that, as well as very transparent, but accountable to make sure, I want to underscore that, accountable to make sure that each family has heard about this, that there's a recognition, as opposed to the Facebook, putting it out there and, you know, we inform people. But at this level, we're talking about making sure that they have the information and that they, they understand it.
And I think that's a discussion point you're having at, potentially at your A-Team meeting tomorrow, is how are we having that contact, whether it's a phone call, a home visit, something so that people are aware of this, all of this information?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That is kind of the process of this decision-making. It's just, it's a process, a decision-making process. So we have steering committee, we have work groups. That will feed into the administrators for some feedback, right, and then back to the steering committee. So it's, there's a checks and balances process to this. Okay.
So part of that, what you're talking about, and actually, the whole facilities and operations, do you have a question? Sorry. As far as like hand washing and stuff, like I know some schools, I've read that some schools have like added sinks or whatever so that kids can wash their hands and it's more accessible, not just having to go to the bathroom. And I do know that some elementary schools have sinks in their, their rooms and stuff. Is that going to be something that, you know, okay, you know, now we're getting to school, this is the first thing we're going to do is wash our hands? And is there going to be more accessibility of that?
That's one of those things that we're still in that processing piece with. So today, like the arrival process today, that was literally one of the things we were talking about, what will look, that look like. And then when I was debriefing with Celeste afterward, she said that that's what their group was talking about. So again, right now, we're in our own subgroups, doing our own process through the guidelines.
Yeah.
And then there will be that overlap that we make those final decisions about. But right now, we're all still digging into all of that information.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll get up.
You probably, Pam, when you, when you speak, make sure you're writing your microphone.
Oh, sorry.
Yep. I think that's why she just popped her head in.
Social, emotional, behavioral, mental health. Sue, Dr. Doris is here.
So Ryan Fairchild and I are co-chairing this subcommittee. And we, we've really just gotten started. So our first task has been group membership. So we do have guidance counselors from the elementary, middle and high school with us. And we have our English learner director. We have our behavior specialist, a social worker, and we have a Spurwink Agency director so far. So, and we're, we'll probably have a few more members joining us. So we are all set to have our first whole group meeting next week. And as has been mentioned, we're using the main DOE guidelines for our work. And it was interesting that you're talking about the family engagement because that's going to be a big part of this group, talking about making sure that we have meaningful two-way communication with all of our families and that we have a system in place for that so that we can support our students. One of the first things that we want to make sure we have in place is training for staff around trauma and mental health needs, and that's before school opens. And then we want to make sure that we have a system in place to identify students, families and staff that need support. Staff are part of this because this is, you know, got to be a big consideration. This has not been easy for anyone, including our staff. So we need to make sure that we have systems in place to support staff. And then part of this work is going to be making sure that we're working with local agencies, that we have outreach to local agencies to support our families. So that's where we are at this point in the work, just beginning.
When's your meeting next week?
It's Wednesday, 12:30 to 2:30.
And where would that be?
It's via Zoom. So I'll, I'll add you to the group.
I'll forward that to my wife.
Okay, great.
Awesome.
We'd love to have her. Any questions about this group?
Great.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Academic programs.
Michelle, put me last.
Communications, communications. It's one of those cross-sections. It's less It's less of a subgroup that gets together like these other groups and more of a responsive, where, when they have a need for communication, do we come in and fit in? And Peter, you'll be glad to know that Peter Robinson is heading that committee with me and Connie will be on that committee. We also have some people who will jump in and out who, depending on the task, so Val Ackley, who runs our Facebook is an example, who will be on that committee, tech integrators who've done a great job creating some trainings and can help us with the technology pieces as well as Nertha, who is our cultural broker. We're hoping to have her participate to some degree, we're working that out right now because she has some, some other obligations. But, so she's our cultural broker, we want to make sure that our communications are reaching, again, all, all of our families in a way that's.
Can you clarify what a cultural broker is?
Sure. So that's a position we have in the district who works with our E L L population and it's beyond just translation. It's being able to navigate cultural needs as, and understanding those sorts of, what do I want to say, like the, the norms of a, of a cultural group. So it's beyond translation, although she helps with that as well. So that's communication, extracurricular and co-curricular activities. That is a group headed by Todd Sampson, our athletic director, and it's just, again, addressing the needs, following the guidance that comes out of the Maine Principals Association around, you know, what, what is expected, what are the recommendations, what should we be following in our, our athletic programs, as well as a response team. So he right now is working on a response team and that's if there are cases or illnesses that should spring up and the response to that, as well as responses around athletes who have not been training for the last several months and making sure that we have a program that is safe for them as they gear up in their training over the next weeks and months.
From what I've seen about the athletics and extracurricular, it's dependent also on the student too, in trust of the student because they're giving guidelines that they have to follow before they can come and, like let's say for soccer, they have to, if they have any of these symptoms, they can't come, they have to take their temperature.
The screening.
Yeah, they have to, you know, so it is a trust issue with students and they're only in small groups and that's their group. So, you know, they are working on that. I wish Todd was here because I did have a question for him because I know that there's softball, they're doing softball right now, but there's no baseball and my baseball-loving son was like, why is there softball and no baseball? So that was a question I had.
Must be, is that A A U?
Well, I don't know because he, I had written him, I had asked, I had written him an email to ask about if, if students were taking their temperatures as well as all these other guidelines.
Is that what it is? So Scott is saying it's up to the availability of the coach.
Oh, okay. Okay.
We don't mandate any summer program.
Okay. So the softball is just a summer program then? Okay.
Just wondering.
Okay. If you are, somebody else's. Yes.
Were the, the, yeah. The city is currently running the rec program. We might look to them, Jeremy, Mark, somebody over there, to see how that's working, to see what they've done to maybe transfer that over into what we're doing with the schools.
So that's great. Thank you for mentioning that because Todd is working really closely with the rec department for a number of reasons. One, they started off first, so he wanted to watch and see how that went and it informed some of the decisions that were made in terms of how to go about the screenings, some of the protocols that were in place. So that was a great partnership and they continue to keep each other informed.
I can speak to that because I coached the U fourteen girls softball and it's seamless. We get our first tournament this weekend, so it's, it's normal.
Yeah, good. Very wonderful.
And I know like the Red Addies Camp, which is typically held at the E L gym, is outside at the gully, which is nice to see, you know, the kids are outside and I know Lisa will be playing in the fall, so my teams will be playing and.
Trying to provide those opportunities for, for our children in the community, right?
I mean, I, as just like every parent, we want normality for our children, but we also have to be really cognizant that this virus has not gone away. We can't just go back to life as normal. You know, we really have to be cognizant that we still have to use those precautions. And if we want to continue, if we want to go back to school in the fall, if we want our economy to stop going down the tubes and, you know, we want to stay healthy and keep our numbers down in Maine, then we really need to follow the guidelines that the CDC is providing. I know there's a lot of argument, there's a lot of politicizing about it, but the fact is if we want to go back to somewhat a normal lifestyle, we need to really be cognizant that it's still there, but we have to be careful. And I appreciate what you guys are doing because it's, you know, you're, you seem to be looking at all the avenues, which is important.
And then academic programs.
Right, so what falls to the academic program group is a couple of things. Some, there's some guidance from D O E about P D for teachers and so we're working on how to offer some things this summer. There is, there's some guidance in there about adjusting curriculum as a result of the potential loss at the end of last year. So that's the kind of work that I will be facilitating with different grade level groups. It was sort of already on our plan before it came out from the D O E. And then the other big piece of work in the academic program category is the development of a remote learning plan that would come to you for approval at some point. And that is based on the idea that there's a possibility that we could face a school closure at some point during the next school year, regardless of what we plan for school opening. So the D O E is asking that there are, the districts have approved remote learning plans in the event that happens. So that falls to my work group as well. And Karen was in my work group. We're a small but mighty group, ready to expand.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Invite anyone who would like to be a part of that because there are a lot of questions that come along with that, you know, a lot of questions, how much time can you expect a five-year-old to be on Zoom versus a fifteen-year-old to be on Zoom? What can you expect for parental involvement with something like that? What can you expect for, even on the teacher's side, teacher accountability? What am I responsible for? It has to look very different than our emergency learning plan and I really want to make sure we designate the difference between that was an emergency response, we did the best we could in the situation that we were in and now moving forward? What did we learn from that experience? And how do we improve upon what we did? And what are the minimal expectations on everyone's part, on, on the teacher's part, on the student's part, on administrator's part? What will that look like? So.
I agree with that a lot because one of the issues, and, and I don't think anybody really wanted to critique how it went, it was one of those, we don't know what we're doing, we're going to do the best we can and everybody's appreciative of that. But there, I really think as a parent, I really want to see more of a streamlined approach so that every teacher, because I, and I've gotten this from parents and I've seen it with my own son, like there were some teachers that were on it, I mean, Zoom, he was, you know, being challenged and then there were some teachers that he never even heard from. And there was like, you know, you know, there were some teachers that were using other ways of teaching instead of them teaching.
So it's a great example because one of the things is that we were hearing, we know, like Karen said, we need to have established some expectations. But we also did hear from parents about the variety of platforms people were using to connect. And so we have made a decision as a district that K two will use CSO and grades three and up will use Google Classroom. So that's been a decision we made as soon as we were getting that feedback. We, so at the end of the school year during the teacher workshop days, we provided P D sessions in CSO and in Google Classroom.
Okay, because that was one of the issues too is we, well, certain teachers didn't know how to do, how to access Google Classroom. So it was very frustrating for the students because they have one teacher that knows what they're, like knows the program, understands it and is right there and then, you know, there's extra work for the student to do. So I, I appreciate the idea of a streamlined approach, that everybody is held accountable to a certain, to do a certain task and not, you know, because I have heard that some, you know, teachers were, weren't accessible as well. So I want to make sure that if we're going to do this, two-point-oh.
Absolutely.
You know, and, and again, it's not a critique to what we did because we did what we did with the best we had and it was one of those fly-by-the-seat-of-our-pants kind of thing. So there's no critique there. Everybody did the best they could. I just hope that now that we've seen that, like Karen said, you know, we can look hindsight as twenty-twenty.
Absolutely.
Although, I don't know.
So my concern with that being said, because I have three kids in school and I had five passwords for each kid and I'm a pretty organized person, but I was frustrated because I'm like CSO, Freckles, Google Classroom, it was hard keeping up. My concern about even if we go streamlined is that we lose that control of the students if they're in their home. If they're in the school, we have control, okay, that person didn't show up to class, that student's not here, so then we're going to look into that where parents that don't have that support system at home, those kids are going to fall through the cracks. So I just, I feel like you guys are looking at every avenue, you're touching base on things, but I think we really need to, we need to be cognizant of the severity of the, of COVID-19. However, we have to really focus on and take into huge consideration the mental health and how this is affecting our kids. The fact that we have kids that are at home and they're not eating all day, they don't feel safe, they're never being told, oh, you have a Zoom class because they don't have the means, that's very concerning to me. I know my kids have friends that haven't left their house since March, okay? I deliver fifty food packs to the schools a week, those kids didn't get those food packs. Food services did extremely, like went above and beyond to get food to children. I'm not, like kudos to them because they worked, in my opinion, harder than a lot of other people and I know they had those means, but some parents didn't have the means to get there and some parents don't care. So that's my, yes, we have to be cognizant of the severity of this, but we also really, we have a high population of kids that do not have any support at home, they don't even have basic needs like food. So that is my huge concern. If we're not opening schools, those kids are going to fall through the crack every single day, it's going to get worse and worse. And the fact that we owe to those children a safe environment to learn or just to come and be fed, basic needs that our kids, that's normal for us to meet those needs, but that's, I just want to make sure we really take into consideration that we have a high population of kids that it's not safe for them to be home next year. It's not, it's not okay.
And I think, you know, it's not a black and white thing. Whereas like, you know, it's cut and dry, there's a lot of gray area. I think the fact that you're, you know, looking at mental health, socio-emotional health, I think incorporating that, which will also address those issues of children who aren't safe and who don't have the, the safety at home, and which I think is great. I think you guys are looking at every aspect, which I am very appreciative of.
Yeah, well, let's face it, it's not good when our kids aren't in our schools and our classrooms.
It's not, no.
And that's not what we want. And so when we, when those situations come about where we have no choice, that we must do this, then we have to do our best. And I think summarizing Karen, what you were saying is emergency learning, we did our best, now we have an opportunity to plan to do better.
And that doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to go that avenue. That's the thing.
Great, I just want to make sure.
We're going to do online and that's it. Like it's not cut and dry, it's very complex and it's very gray.
It's a plan we have to hope to not have to utilize.
In case, yeah, in case we do, and if we do have to go in that way, then I would appreciate, personally, I know, just to have a streamlined way, that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying we definitely need to go that way, that's why this committee was created so that you're looking at all the, you know, angles of this and, and deciding what's best for the child and the teachers.
And quite honestly, you, you do paint the picture for many of our children in our community. And I will say that sometimes even learning, even learning can be that lifeline for them. So if we can get consistent, streamlined, make it as easily accessible, again, to go back to that word, and, and there's a consistent expectation from their adult that they're connected with, their teacher, and they can count on that, then it makes it easier to access.
I think consistency is the key, what you said, consistency in everything. Every child, every adult deals better with consistency. So no matter what you choose to do.
I don't know why it popped into my head, but I, you may, I think we talked about it before, but just to remind you, we have throughout this time had links on the website for families who had needs and I can't tell you what the number's up to now, but we had a lot of response from families who had needs. I can't get to pick up the food, I can't get to pick up the packet, some people who were concerned about being evicted. So we were able to match resource through that, that site and that survey of people, just kind of a help. I think I might have told you, we even had some, I had somebody from Alabama, I think it was, Auburn, Alabama. Must have Googled it and it came up and she had a need and we solved that one too for her. We put her in touch with somebody down in that school district. So we had that and then we also had the volunteers, who, people who wanted to help and people did come forth and amazing drove. So that, I just wanted to remind you about that.
And I'm glad you mentioned that because a lot of people didn't know, but somebody once made that they needed toilet paper and they reached out to the hotline and toilet paper was delivered, you know, when nobody could find toilet paper. So it's the, the city, the school department really went above and beyond to not only meet the learning needs, but the overall student needs, so.
Great, good.
So as you know, we did send a survey out to parents, we also did a survey to staff and so I am going to tell you a little bit about how that was developed and our plans moving forward and I've pulled just a few key pieces from the survey that I want to share with you tonight. So I was the one who coordinated the work group that crafted the surveys. There were, that was a voluntary, voluntold group from within the Health and Safety Committee. And what we did is we got together and we had a lot of conversation about what we should ask for questions. We had some, I had some samples of surveys from some other curriculum leaders in my state organization and we reviewed those. We made a really conscious decision not to put a lot of open response questions on our survey because we, from the outset, had a plan to offer, to have our principals offer some forums where people could ask questions and where we could ask more questions of people. So it was intentional on our part, I'm really glad that Stephanie Maris made that suggestion because when I look at the number of responses we've had and I think about a survey that was structured as open response, it would be completely overwhelming. So we did get 1,008 responses to our family survey, which is by far the best response rate we've ever had with a survey. And those, and I would say those all came in, most of them within the first week, just flew in quickly. So the, the particular questions I want to share with you tonight are these. So we had a question about transportation because we knew that that was one of our limiting factors and we were going to be challenged in terms of busing students. So this question was about parents' ability to, to transport their own children to, to and from school. So you can see that fifty-six percent of the parents responded and said they could. Another fourteen point three percent said they could, but it would be difficult. And then there's the other categories of I could get my student to school, but I couldn't pick the child up or vice versa. And then there is seven point five percent that report their children get to and from school on their own. So this is information that we then will give back to the transportation, oh, I think it's Facilities and Operations, that's looking at transportation and this will help just give us some information that we can use as we move forward.
How many surveys were sent out?
How many surveys?
Yeah, you got a thousand and eight back, how many?
We did, we, it's a, it's an online survey.
How many, do you know how many families, eligible families there are in Auburn that could have?
We talked about this, I haven't run the exact number.
Thirty-six hundred students?
Thirty-six hundred students, but obviously multiple students.
Thirty-five hundred.
Yeah. So the next question we asked was about what conditions needed to be in place in our schools for parents to feel comfortable sending their children back? So the twenty-two point four percent are the people who said they don't think there needs to be anything, just it could be as it was. The forty-one point six percent are comfortable if there's a screening, like we talked about, a screening before, as people enter the building or before they come in and out.
Temperature?
Yep. With temperature, that includes temp. With temperature, that includes temperature and those general screening questions like we've used with our own staff. In fact, we do that here every morning before we come to work. And then 19.9% said they would only be comfortable if there also was social distancing and fewer students in classrooms. And the green, which doesn't show the percent, those are the people who would not feel comfortable unless there's a vaccine.
What's the percentage on that one?
Yeah, I don't know. I'd have to go into the live survey. I can look for you though. And I'll go in and look when it's live. I took a screenshot, so.
8%.
Thank you.
Looks like 8%.
And then the white, Michelle said, why is there a white section? Well, there was an other option there. So these are all the individual, the people who clicked other and then wrote a comment. So they're all 1, 1, 1, 1, 1. It fills up the rest of that, so. And then we asked this, if remote learning were an option, not saying it is, but if it were an option for families in the fall, how likely would you be to choose this option for your children? So I don't like the representation of this data in the Google form. I think it's hard to read, so I added some information at the bottom. So you can see there were 671 people who responded for elementary. Parents were able to respond for any grade span they had children in, right? So one parent may have responded in all three places if they had students in all three grade spans. So 671 for elementary, 253 for middle, 396 for high school. And so you can see, it's very interesting. So in elementary, 40% of the parents said they had no interest in the option of remote learning. That goes down a little bit as you go up toward high school. 42% said they were interested in some sort of blend. So sometime in school, sometime at home. And then that number goes up from elementary as you go toward middle and high school. The interesting one for me was the last one. That's very consistent. So 9% of elementary, 8% of middle school, 10% of high school were very interested in the remote learning as an option. Do you have questions about that? Okay. Then we have some staff survey. So we tried to ask some comparable questions, so I pulled those for you. This one is asking teachers about the conditions that they would hope to see in place in order to feel comfortable returning to school. And so you can see it's a 19.4%, which is very close to, I think the parent survey was 22, so it's right in the same ballpark, that we're comfortable with no special screening or accommodations, 38.6 with the daily health screening, and 42% with health screening and social distancing. And then we thought we'd check on how we did because our first attempt at putting safety protocols in place was for our teachers during the teacher workshop days. So the question we asked was just, did those protocols accomplish our goal of creating a safe environment for staff? And that was the response we got. So what we, I didn't put this in there, but the next question, the open-ended question for teachers was, give us your feedback about those protocols so that people who said no could tell us where the issues were. A lot of those responses were from people who had said yes and they pointed out things they liked or things that could have worked better. So we have that as a data set as well.
Was there anything for, that stuck out to people with the no? Was there sort of an area that we missed?
I would love to know why, like, didn't look, like, why didn't you feel safe?
Yeah, why?
Yeah, right. So, right, and so they.
Common theme among that 8.9%?
No, not really. I think some of those, I imagine.
Some of the themes, some of the themes were, I didn't go in.
Right, right.
I chose not to go in because I'm high risk.
Right.
Or no on the survey?
Yes.
Oh, so.
And then some were questioning some of the procedures in the protocol. I didn't think we needed to wear gloves were some of the responses that we got, which we didn't really have gloves in there except for cleaning, but, so there were things like that. And then there was one other and I can't remember.
The data does come into a spreadsheet. So when, when we look at it, when we analyze it, we'll be able to see the people who said no and then be able to see their feedback. But lots of people gave feedback whether they said yes or no.
It's interesting that the folks who didn't come in with the survey could answer no to this. Because it skews that a little bit.
Right, right. That's why we added the question to ask for feedbacks.
And some people did say, I didn't come in, but I felt safe with the procedure. So you had it going both ways on that.
Good question, but.
Creating a safe environment, there were some comments about, we had said in that protocol that they couldn't eat together. They didn't like that. I understand that, you know, they haven't seen each other since March and now we're saying you can come in and be in your own room. So that ended up, we ended up making a slight adjustment to that if they wanted to go outside and eat and maintain social distance.
On the parents' one, you said you had the other, the white section of the pie. What were some of the things that were, was there a common theme in there as well?
No, you know, I don't, I haven't read through all of those, but I don't, I scanned them and I don't remember any particular one thing jumping out.
Okay.
I can't remember, well, I won't go back. I can't remember right off the bat. I did read them.
Did they seem like something, like suggestions that you were already looking at?
Yeah.
I would say we, having skimmed through the, through the information, I haven't, there hasn't been anything that was not something that's been a possibility we've discussed.
Right.
I wish I could say yes because we could use, you know, everybody could use some good ideas. And then this one was about, oh, to mirror the, if, if remote learning were an option for families, how interested would you be in teaching remotely? And so this one, you know, I think if you put them next to each other, they wouldn't look wildly different, which is interesting. We have the no interest, we have, the majority of them are interested in something blended. I think that's just because they're aware of the challenges of social distancing and the class size that we have. So then we have one more. Professional development needs, we did ask this as well so that we could use it to inform the academic programs group work about PD this summer. So you can see that people are feeling more comfortable with designing meaningful online instruction and use of technology tools, which is great because we gave them some training in the last week. And then as you move across to the right, they are indicating a need for some engagement PD when you're doing online instruction, assessment online and trauma-informed instructional strategies. So we'll use this as we do some planning for this summer. And Michelle?
Question about?
I, I know that right now circulating around, so this is, this is a survey that was created by the Auburn School Department.
Correct.
Then there's a survey that was created by the DOE. Then there was a third survey created by two representatives, Justin Fecto and Heidi Sampson. How, I'm just curious as to whether or not any of these surveys, will the results of the other two surveys be shared with? Do you know if they're shared with departments? Are we sharing the results of our survey with the Department of Ed?
So I don't anticipate the Department of Ed will ask districts for their own data or they wouldn't have probably done their own survey. I do have my state ed leader group meeting tomorrow with the commissioner. And so one of the things I will ask her is what the plans are with the results of the state survey. I don't know, I haven't actually gone on to take a look at it. I don't know if it asks people to identify by county or by town. Have any of you seen that survey?
And I can't tell you right now which, which one asked, which.
Obviously, county, right. So obviously, if they do share their data, it will be countywide. So we'll have to take that into consideration as we look at it. I did not know about the survey, the third survey. But I think that Fecto and Sampson are on the ed committee, or they were.
They are. I believe they both are.
So I don't know about that survey. I intend to ask tomorrow.
Okay, okay, wonderful. And I think one of the other questions I have is, do we, do we know based on the responses that came in, can we, did we have identifying schools in other, like, did we get more of a response from one school versus another school so that we can understand what demographics are really being represented in these surveys?
Actually, I didn't put that in here, but there was a question, there was a couple pieces of information to help us get at demographics. So this leads well into the next, can you just? So the other question I threw in here was the question where we asked parents if they wanted to participate, if they were willing to participate in a forum hosted by building principals. So if they said yes to that, they gave us their contact information. There was a place to put your name in the survey also. And you identified the schools that your children attended and grade spans and all. And the other question that helps us with demographics is a question about whether they, the family had accessed the food service program. So, and I did that, we did, we, I shouldn't say I, we did that intentionally so that we could look at that and say, how accurate a representation of our population is this surveyed data? Because you can get really excited and say, wow, 1,008, that's amazing. We've never done that. But when you look at the pie, it's like 77% have never accessed the food program.
Okay.
Now, in terms of the schools, it comes out beautifully. You know, Fairview had more responses than East Auburn. So that came out really, really balanced, but not, not the demographics of the free and reduced hot lunch.
Okay.
And we did have conversation also about ELL because it was not a translated survey.
Right.
Partly because in conversation, Michelle can speak to this better than I can probably, but talking to Nerda about other ways that, that our ELL families prefer to give feedback, that even a translated survey isn't always the best option for them.
Okay, so we're being mindful of, so what, if I'm hearing you correctly, we're being mindful of just sort of thinking about the types of families that responded to the surveys, the types of families that may have missed an opportunity and then like if I'm backtracking and connecting.
So what I did, what I did today is I took all of the data and in our master spreadsheet, I created a sheet for each school. And I put all of the data for that school in that, that spreadsheet. So now Stephanie could take a look at the Fairview list, she could see exactly which parents had given feedback. And we know who hasn't. She also will have, she'll be able to sort and say, here's the list of parents that said they'd be in a forum. So we're talking with them tomorrow at our A-Team meeting about next steps to make sure that people who haven't had input do.
Okay. And I think that's really to the point that I'm getting to, really want to make sure all stakeholders, all, all types of families are represented when we make decisions about what school will look like for the fall.
We did not expect this, this type of response. So no, thinking we were going to get much less than this, we were thinking about how are we going to hear from, in other ways, from parents? This is quick, easy, it informs us initially to a certain level. We want to go deeper and we want to go a little more broadly in terms of representation.
Right, because I don't believe our students with IEPs, our students with 504s, our students with.
And they may be in here. I didn't have them identify that, I didn't ask that as an identifying question. I didn't feel like it was probably something I needed to do because I knew that I'd asked for names and then the data was going to go to the principals and they're going to know who those parents are.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
So what else have you looked at? You said you, you know, you were considering other ways to reach, reach parents and stuff. What other avenues are you kind of looking at?
So the forums at this point.
Okay.
Forums, and we're going to talk about possibly some other thoughts of how they can reach out to parents who may not want to access a forum because culturally it might be fine in one culture and it may be in another demographic, that's a really uncomfortable thing to do.
Right, I'm thinking Michelle just alluded to it, that person-to-person contact.
Yeah, I just said to Michelle today, you know, we have, that we have the capacity to say to Stephanie, find some teachers who are willing to come in and make some phone calls.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Remind me, was there a robo-call about the survey?
There was.
Okay, that's right, I knew.
Peter did the.
So people that aren't on Facebook, every parent got a call?
Yes. Everybody, everybody was notified via that.
Right, okay, that's good to know.
It's on our website and on Facebook.
Right.
We put it on Facebook.
But I just remembered that I did get a call.
Fantastic response.
Yeah.
I've been, I was so excited. I looked, I think I looked the second day and I ran into Michelle's office and I said, Michelle, there are 500 responses in 24 hours.
Right.
So, yeah. And our teacher, I put the number on there for, for staff too.
Yes, it is.
Staff, we had 348, which is a good, is a good response for staff too.
Nice.
Thank you for your discussion and your thoughts on this. It's very helpful. So, where do we go? So tonight, we've just gone over information, process, on our process and our progress, those details influencing the opening of school and those decisions around that. And then, you know, getting prepared for the presentation of a final plan, getting your feedback as well should be on that list. And then so July 22nd, the final, the presentation of the plan for the structure and the schedule for learning for the fall and then your vote on that plan. You know, it's likely, it's likely that we will have a combination of in-person and some distant remote learning. And so that's just looking at feasibility issues. So I want to put that out in fairness to people. But our intent, the steering committee has been clear, and I just want to re-articulate that, that in-person is the goal. We know that is what is the best. We believe that is what is the best for our students for many, many reasons, so.
We know that's the general feeling of the, of, you know, our families. They would like their, their, at least families we're hearing from.
Acknowledging that.
Acknowledging that they, we are hearing them, they would like their children back in the buildings, so.
But I do.
Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I do, like what you said, you know, it's also important to give families a choice because I don't want to make anybody feel uncomfortable. And if they have a high-risk person at home and they don't want their child in the school, but then I also want to make sure our teachers aren't going, doing, you know, I don't want them to do extra work that they're in school teaching and doing remote learning. If there's, if that's the option we choose, and again, we don't know, that we really need to keep in mind, teachers, and they're exhausted from everything they did since March, that if we give the choice, I just want to make sure we keep teachers in mind that if they're in the classroom, we're videotaping them, the kids that are safe at home.
Yeah, that can be an option too, like videotaping what they're doing in the class.
But I just don't want teachers to be doing it double.
So I know that there's, the other districts are doing like, you know, three different, there's three different ways. We're either going to go in, all in, we're going to do remote learning or we're going to do half and half, like you said, like a combination. So when we do come up with a decision, will there be different avenues? Because what if something happens and we do get a flare-up and then things go south? You know, that's my only concern. Like, I'm one of those people that like my ducks in a row and if contingency plans?
So I think that's when the remote learning plan would kick in then.
Would kick in, okay.
Well, and we've had conversations about.
Not saying it's going to go there, but in case.
So doing things like making sure that what, let's just, if we assumed that we had to start with, in a situation where we couldn't fit everybody in the building at the same time and there was some sort of schedule to accommodate that, then making sure that what we make for decisions about the schedule is flexible and nimble enough to move from, like, you know, you could start with not being able to bring everyone into the building and then we could enter a phase of reopening in our state or our county where there's more flexibility for bringing more students in. And so we want to make sure we don't create a schedule that can't adjust.
Yes.
As the numbers go up or down. If you have a case in your school, it may mean some group, some part of your student population is out for a period of time. So we, we're keeping that in mind that we don't know, we can't say that the way we start school is the way it stays.
Yeah, right. I know COVID has definitely made us very agile. We've had to.
Hopefully.
The word, and now I heard amphibious is the next word, so I'm trying to figure that one out.
So my question in the beginning, when I said something about the teachers, as far as like exposure, someone gets exposed or someone gets positive, is positive, and then a teacher's exposed. You know, they have to be out for 14 days, quarantine. You know, teachers are concerned that they're going to be using all of their sick time and all of their vacation time, which is a big concern. Is that being looked at as well as far as how that's going to work? And if one child is exposed, does that mean that everybody has to be on quarantine or does that mean?
One of the reasons that, that you try to look at ways to create, like they're doing for athletics, they've created these pods of 10 that aren't mixing, right? They're staying together and that's about contact tracing. So the idea in schools is that you minimize the cross-mixing of groups.
Yep. Yep.
So, that if you had a classroom where a teacher or a student tested positive, the students in that pod are the ones that would, um, have to follow the quarantine guidelines rather than the whole school.
Okay.
So, we are having conversations about that as well.
Okay, and, and looking at, you know, as far as teacher's time and vacation time and stuff like that, that's being looked at as well?
Well, certainly, we, those are all things we have to consider and they do, that's why there is sick time for, for folks. But there's also some federal leave that is specific to the COVID situation. So, all of those options would be available to our, to our teachers.
Because what I was hearing too is from some teachers saying, you know, well, how is it fair that I have to use my time if I am exposed to COVID? You're making me go into the building, I, and, and now I get it and I have to use my time for that. So, that, that was just one of my concerns and, and that I've heard concerns about.
I mean, if there was a quarantine in a classroom and we had a good, solid, remote learning plan.
Yeah.
Right?
That comes into play too.
Yep. So, I mean, it's different if you've, you're quarantined for exposure or you're sick.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Those are two distinct.
Yeah.
And you can test too, I mean, exposure, you can get tested, I mean, that's, and they're quite available now.
Yeah, so much more than they were.
Right, I mean.
They'll test you.
They're just not that accurate either.
Like, speaking in my old biology teacher head, the game changer is a, a very accessible test for the antibodies. And when that becomes readily accessible, I think you're looking at some different situations too.
Absolutely, yeah. But those are all still questions to be, right, to be answered. They're on a list, they are certainly on, on a list of, of what that will look like. All right.
Work, ladies.
Yeah, great work.
Thank you.
Great job.
All right, thank you all so much, it's a lot of work. Again, um, if you are interested in jumping on board with some of these ideas, some of this planning, please, uh, reach out. All right, then moving on to standing committees, uh, we are, let's start with finance subcommittee.
Meeting is next week. Uh, we have stuff that's still out for bid on the projects. Uh, we hope to be getting that back in two weeks.
Okay.
And, uh, once we get the year-end stuff, we'll have a better idea of where we will end up with fund balance and stuff.
Okay, because last we met, there were still, all the invoices from the nineteen-twenty school year had not come in yet.
And, yes, and I will remind everybody that part of this going forward would, was the decision that we made about utilizing funds from this year to buy as much as possible for next year. So, we need to be aware of that fact when we do get the final numbers in.
Hmm, yeah, okay.
I had a, I don't know if you're going to get to this, but I've briefed, but very timely, uh, finance-related items. We have a budget vote, um, next Tuesday, the fourteenth, so I just want to remind everyone of that. Um, obviously, as we plan for next year, one of the things we need the most is budget. So, uh, if everyone can please remember to vote next Tuesday, remind your friends and family and neighbors to vote, uh, that'd be great.
Adam, what, what happens if it doesn't pass us? What's the process that follows?
We're going to move over to your house and.
My house?
Yeah.
On it?
It would come back to the school committee to say, where do we go from here?
And then, without direction also, correct? Like, there's no too high, too low?
Correct, the question asking about that is not on the ballot. So, it's just going to be a yes or no, up or down. So, you, correct, it would be, it would be, uh, the superintendent and committee discussing where do we go from here? But hopefully, we won't have to get to that discussion.
And also, Adam, if I'm not mistaken, people can come into City Hall and vote up until, I believe, the twelfth. They can come in in person and vote, you don't have to just come in and vote on the day that you're voting. You can come in and vote.
Yeah, and I, I wish I had looked at that before tonight, uh, I'm not sure exactly how that works. Brian, do you know any more about that?
To give you an idea, the votes in the past have run somewhere in the three hundreds.
Yeah, they're higher now. Well, there's been.
There's been three thousand.
Yeah.
That have ballots that have already.
Well, there's been a lot of absentee and in-mailing ballots, but also you can come to City Hall and do early voting. So, you don't have to be in line waiting, you know, if that's a concern of yours, you can come in and vote. So, there's a lot of accessibility to be able to get here to vote, so get out there and vote.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, all right, thank you. Uh, policy subcommittee. Just got policy updates.
You heard it tonight.
I was going to say, we've just got policies, right?
There's more to come, we, we're looking forward to section E.
Okay, thank you. And Brian, I'll continue with you for city council update.
Uh, well, we postponed the meeting that was, uh, this week, we're not going to be meeting again until the twentieth, but, um, and I have to put it someplace here. Uh, the, the city is currently looking, uh, as you guys may have seen, the mayor had sent out stuff requesting, and we have got further stimulus money, uh, from the state. Uh, and they are continuing to look for more sources as, I'm sure that we'll continue to look for the state for educational funds, if anything that may come up that's extra. Uh, it was mentioned earlier tonight, the Arvin rec is up and running, uh, between a hundred and seventy and two hundred kids. And as Michelle said, we have already touched base with them to see how things are working with them and to give us some ideas of shortcomings and pluses and minuses in that si, situation. Uh, we are continuing to look at the finances. Uh, we have lost, uh, a fair amount of business here in town. And as small businesses make up almost forty percent of what we get in revenue, uh, we are very concerned about where that may be going. Uh, we'll get more information on that. And, uh, just as, as a measure, you know, as we vote for the budget and things, we may have to remember too that as the city does, so does the school committee. So, if there has to be changes that are made later on, that's something that we can do. Yes, we are living with a vote that we get from the staff, but we, as a committee, are responsible for, uh, the financial business of the, of the school. And we can make changes if necessary, and there's a chance that they, they may be necessar, uh, necessary depending on how the finance is coming back.
I think we talked about, there was one of us said we can budget for it, we just don't necessarily need to, you know, but if we can't spend it, we cannot spend it, then that's.
Right.
Okay.
When you mentioned state funds, is that federal dollars coming through the state?
It's, yes.
Oh, okay.
The, 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 the state was currently sitting, I think they said it somewhere around the vicinity of one point four billion dollars.
Right.
All the mayors were asking for them to disperse it. Uh, and as you guys hear the news as well as I do, that they are looking at further stimulus money. Uh, because right now, the municipalities are saying that there could be some very serious shortcomings this next year insofar as, uh, revenue is concerned.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Any other questions for Brian? Okay, moving on, wellness subcommittee. Haven't met, don't believe you've met. Okay, uh, curriculum subcommittee. Uh, Shelley and I met through Zoom, I don't even remember when that was, Shelley, last week, week before?
Before.
I, I, I'm sorry, I don't remember. Um, we discussed that, um, AP math offerings are going to be extended to AP statistics. And I admire Elena Berry, who absolutely will be teaching this. She has been vetting statistics textbooks and actually reading these statistics textbooks. Um, she is going to be teaching this AP college class. She is vetting textbooks that are recommended by the AP College Board. Um, and the textbook, which was approved, is aligned with the College Board units. Um, there are some online resources, but it's very dependent upon that teacher-student relationship, that engagement between teacher and student. There are some, it just, it was a, she went through a lot of work to really find a textbook that would be, um, the best resource that she could find. Funding from that comes from the Title IV accounts. And, um, she's also attending an AP online institute this summer. And I've never heard anyone be so joyful in, and, and excited to participate in, in this. So, kudos to people with those math brains, um, that was a great information for me. Um, elementary, again, a conversation, just revisiting everyday math, um, making sure that there's some math PD around that, uh, potentially looking at some, you know, some pilings, some of some phonics. And then we talked about digital platform as well, the K-two with Seesaw, and then three through twelve with Google Classroom. So, it was great to just sort of see the alignment really starting to come together, so thank you for that, Shelley. Um, audit subcommittee. Nothing since our last update, they're here doing the audit, but we haven't had an update yet. Okay, all right. Community Learning Center, Mr. Simpson.
The committee met on June thirtieth, I was not able to attend. Um, they, they were going to offer their programming virtually this summer, they sent out a hundred and twenty invitations, they had nine responses, and it led them to ask the state for a waiver to let them out of their contractual obligation, and they're going to use the summer to reorganize.
Okay.
I'm reading my notice.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
So, they're going to spend this summer regrouping, organizing spaces and planning for the events in person when they, when they come back, so.
Okay.
Another victim of the Rona.
Yep, yep, absolutely, okay. Transportation appeals.
Nope, nothing.
Okay, uh, building committee, nothing new as far as timeline, everything is still trucking along. There was a neighborhood meeting that happened on June twenty-third that I was not able to attend, although I did ask that if there was anything that came up in that, that I was informed and I didn't hear from anyone. So, I don't know how well the meeting was attended, um, or any questions that were asked to have.
I was able to sit in on that, it went very well. Uh, so, there were several neighbors there, uh, there virtually, and they had some questions that sort of specific to their property understandably. And Harriman has followed up with each of those people. So, uh, you know, I think it went very well and we're going to make sure we answer any of those questions that people have.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Uh, share center, I've reached out now that Rose is no longer with us. I, I have reached out for a contact at the share center, I'm waiting to hear on, on that. Uh, the DEI.
We are meeting with Connie on Monday, um, Virginia, Laura, hopefully Dave will be able to meet, meet with us as well. We're going to be doing a Zoom meeting, so.
Okay.
Tell you more after that.
Okay, all right, wonderful. Uh, negotiations.
We're meeting Monday, um, with Food Services to talk face-to-face using social distancing.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. You've heard the full report from the Safety and Health Committee, uh, Parent Advisory, I would assume right now.
No, nothing right now.
Uh, and backing right, back up to you again, Brian, with technology.
Yeah, we're meeting at the end of the month.
You meet the end of the month?
End of the month, yeah.
Yep, yep, absolutely. All right, everyone, upcoming meetings, uh, there are two to add on, obviously, the retreat dates of the thirteenth and the twenty-first. And then the upcoming meetings, these are seven o'clock meetings, no workshops planned prior to that. However, if we need to add a workshop because, for any reason, we may be adding, uh, maybe need some information for, you know, our reentry plan to come up, um, so just right now, there, none are scheduled right now, so. All right, and as always, future agenda items can be sent to either, uh, myself or Dr. Brown, request for information, same thing. Oh, sorry, Brian.
Yeah, going back to the building committee or future agenda, can we have, can we have an update on fundraising for the new, for the new school? Where, where are we on with fundraising efforts?
I think Dr. Brown is just beginning to dive into that. So, I would say next meeting, we can add a, we can add a bulleted, uh, make sure that we have a, a conversation or update around, um, fundraising or where it's at right now.
Yeah, because I think last we saw was, we saw the, uh, I have it right here, it was the.
I think, believe it's the Legacy, the Navy Rights, yes, yeah.
And that was like the last update we've, we've heard, so it'd be just nice to put that as an agenda item.
Yeah, yep, okay, absolutely makes sense. Thank you for that, Brian. All right, um, so anything else, request for information, just let us know, or if nothing comes to parklight right now. And with all that, I believe we are done for this evening, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Welcome, Connie.
Oh, thank you.
It's nice to have you. So moved.
Well, thank you.
You're so moved, I got you, Brian.
If I, if I just could take a second.
Absolutely, sure, I am so sorry, go ahead.
It's okay, it's a pleasure to meet you all in person. And I want to add my voice to the others that have thanked Michelle and her team for the work that they have done on that steering committee. I've sat in one and a half times, sort of, and it is a tremendous undertaking. And to be able to present what I thought was a very reasoned, coherent, thoughtful, and to hear your questions, that's, that was the takeaway for me, it's a huge amount of work. So, thank you very, very much for that.
Welcome. Thank you.
Look forward to making that recommendation, uh, on the twenty-second. And if anything, if there's something I've heard from families here, it's we need to know, we just need to know. You know, people want what's going to happen for their child, so. Anyway, so thank you, the welcome's been great, I've been able to meet the staff upstairs, I've been to a couple of the schools, and look forward to continuing to work with the community of Auburn, so thanks for having me. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, I, I put a motion to adjourn, I heard you, Brian Bell left as a first. Second?
Second.
All right, Pam, all those in favors, seen none opposed, meeting is adjourned, thank you all.